Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, we know we have a packed house and trying to accommodate a number of people that have come out to support our agenda tonight. So in light of that, because there are so many people, we want to make sure to continue to have order in this auditorium. So, so that we don't have to clear out anyone, let's make sure to have order. If you cooperate with us, we promise we will cooperate with you. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Alright, so, welcome to the Shelby County Board of Education, April 30th Board Business Meeting. Ms. Anthony, please call the roll.
Board Member McKissick.
Here.
Board Member Orgel.
Here.
Board Member Woods.
Board Member Love.
Here.
Board Member McCormick.
Board Member Green.
Present.
Board Member Bibbs.
Present.
Board Member Coleman.
Present.
Board Chair Avant.
Here.
Chair, you have seven board members present.
We have a quorum. Next, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Color guard tonight is from White Station High School, Trinity Whitehead, Carmen Mosley, Patrick Boone, Mary Pittman. Please remain standing after the Pledge of Allegiance for a moment of silence in light of those students who have passed away. Sanaya Boyd, a second grader at John P. Freeman.
All right, lastly, but we want to make sure to recognize a couple of students. One, Tupac Mosley, who is the valedictorian of Raleigh Eacham High School. And the 2019 recipient. I gotta get this out. He is the 2019 recipient of the Bill and Melinda Gates Millennium Scholarship. This scholarship provides free post-secondary education to students present. We're gonna present Mr. Mosley with the plaque. All right, we also wanna make sure to recognize Jane Wiseman, who's the number-one high school basketball player in the country. When he is not on the court, he is a gentleman who proudly represents his community and dedicates his time to the pursuit of excellence. Okay, last but not least, Ms. Erica Stevens is the 4th grade math teacher at John P. Freeman Optional School, which was a recipient of the Milken Educator Award. Ms. Stevens has received several honors, including Board Proclamation in her honor. Tonight, Mr. Paul Fleming, the Assistant Commissioner of Teachers and Leaders, will present the Milken Op- Opliceek to Ms. Stevens.
Well, thank you and good evening, and such an honor to be here tonight on behalf of the Tennessee Department of Education to present the Milken Educator Award to Ms. Erica Freeman at JP, or John P. Freeman Optional School. This Milken Award is for 30 years, the Family Foundation has presented the Milken Educator Award to outstanding teachers across the country. The award has inspired excellence in the world of education by honoring top educators with $25,000 to spend any way that they wish. The very first award was presented in 1987, and awards have been used to fund college as well as continuing their own education. This award is not a lifetime achievement award, but rather targets early-to-mid-career education professionals who already have impressive academic achievements, and more significantly, for the promise of what they will accomplish in the future. It is completely unique because educators like Ms. Stevens cannot apply, and there is not an application, and they do not know they are under consideration, until last fall when the surprise award was announced. She is, as you know, a 4th grade math teacher at JP Freeman Optional School. And last year, her math classes exceeded projected growth scores on the Shelby County Schools Formative Assessment with 86% of her students testing at a proficient level or higher. She delivers not just that, but professional development in her building for the district on a national level, including discussions on Eureka Math, a curriculum she has pioneered in her district. She is, JPF has also captured many of her lessons on video, which is impressive for best practices to share with other teachers. So while she was surprised last with this award in October, we would now like to formally recognize her in the presence of family, friends, and members of the community here in Shelby County. On behalf of Commissioner Penny Schwinn and the Milken Family Foundation, I present the Milken Educator Award to Ms. Erica Stevens.
And if Ms. Stevens' family could come forward to be in the picture with her. Ms. Stevens requested her family come up really quick to be in the picture with her. This is a family of educators from across this district. Board members, I am thankful for your indulgence. We oftentimes see in the headlines so many things that could be wrong, but we should always take moments to celebrate the things that are good about SES, and we saw that tonight for sure. I hope that that's some of the headlines that will be on the news as well. All of the great things that are happening within our district. All right. With the approval of the agenda, now is the question on the approval of the agenda. And at this point, I would like to ask board members if there is no objection, if we could move a few items up to the front of the agenda to expedite time, because I know that a lot of folks are here in order to hear about specifically two items that are on the agenda. And if there is no objection from board members, I'd like to move those items up. That would be... 1120, and then... That is the closure of charter schools, and then there is also a resi- um, there's a, we're adding Maxine Smith HVAC and Oak Haven Elementary HVAC, correct Superintendent?
Yes.
Are there any other amendments to the agenda? Ms. Love?
I would like to add a resolution to suspend the search for Superintendent.
Okay, and that's another item to be added to the agenda. If there are no objections, we are moving those to the front of the agenda after public comments. Seeing no objections, can I get a roll call vote?
Board Member McKissick? Board Member Orgel? Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Green?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Coleman? Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
The agenda is approved. We'll now move to public comment. Tennessee law makes no specific provisions for the participation of public, at public meetings of local boards of education. However, board policy provides that not more than 30 minutes of each regular business and special call meeting shall be devoted to public comment. Speakers must state their name, home address, organization he or she is representing, event, and subject of the representation, presentation before they are permitted to proceed. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs that concern them. Speakers are asked to refrain from using names of personnel or names of persons connected with the school system, particularly when lodging a complaint. Speakers will not be permitted to engage in gossip, make defamatory comments, or use abusive or vulgar language. The chairman shall have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who is disruptive or does not appear to board rules. The timer projected on the screen to your right and directly behind the board will turn yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining. When you hear two bells, your time has expired. In light of the number of people that have signed up to speak, I want to be very clear in my instructions. You will come, state your name, your address. Each speaker will have 45 seconds. We want to be respectful of the time that is given to all of the folks who've signed up. In light of that, I'm gonna call the first three names. Please be mindful that there is 45 seconds. In order to keep the meeting orderly and to proceed, we will not proceed if there is ruckus in the background. Sandra F. Johnson, Sarah Hamer, and David Page.
I am Sandra Johnson, 518 East Devant, Memphis, Tennessee, 38106, retired principal of Shelby County Schools. Why search when it is evident that the right person is leading the district in a forward motion? You search for what you don't have. You search for what you can't find. We have the right person. You found him through his leadership within the district. Dr. Jarvis Ray knows the data, the direction, and the diversity of our district. We spend dollars that can be, why spend dollars that can be used to continue improvement of our district? Therefore, I ask this board on April 30, 2019, to allow Dr. Jarvis Ray to continue to lead our district as Superintendent of Shelby County Schools.
Ms. Hamer? Ms. Hamer?
Sarah Hamer, 4840 Chickasaw Road, 38117, Shelby County Schools PLC Coach. The search for Superintendent is over. Dr. Ray has 100% supported MCS and SES. He has supported us not only in operations, but he's also supported us with academics. He has personally come to my school to check on the air conditioning. He has called parents when their students have passed away. This means a lot. We have found our person. We have, he has comforted the parents, he has comforted the faculty. The board can do a national, an international search, but none can compare to the dedication of Dr. Ray. The canvas can stop here. Dr. Ray for Superintendent.
Good afternoon. David Page, 1510 Hanauer Street, Memphis, Tennessee. I just wanna say normally I come down here to do some protesting, complaints, and all that stuff. This is the first time I've ever come down to really say that me and Dr. Ray have been working together for two years. I'm with the Westwood Community Association, and I've been looking for something to protest about, but I have not been able to find it. So I just wanna simply say that I am very impressed with Dr. Ray. When I, when I call, he calls back, and y'all know I'm a stickler for calling me back. So, but he does call back, he responds to emails. I give him an A+ on customer service, and I thank you, Dr. Ray. And I think we should keep him as Superintendent.
Yes, Mr. Page, we know how you are about that customer service. Keith Williams, Sheba Bryson, and Coleman Settles?
I am Keith Williams, Executive Director of the Memphis and Shelby County Education Association, and a 42-year retired educator from this school district. I do want to refer you, as you have a copy of an addendum that I've given you, which summarizes the function and the processes of the I-zone. This is a document that was written in 19, in 2012, and I am signatory on this document along with Mrs. Branch, along with the Superintendent, and along with Ken Foster and Billy Orgel. This document actually explains how the I-zone in this district was brought here, how it is to work, and how it is to survive. It has some specificity in it that requires this district to follow because it is under the federal funded Act of ESA. One of those specificities is, a principal may not, and this is in the document, remain in an I-zone school if they have failing data. And I am convinced that we have some in that, in that area, and I urge the doc, the district to look at it.
Hello, my name is Sheba Briscoe. I'm at 709 Rosebank Road here in Memphis, 38116. I'm not sure I'm at the right place. Well, I'm probably at the right place, but the wrong meeting. But I did call a month ago, and someone told me I needed to attend this last school board meeting. I'm simply calling, I ran into an old gospel choir teacher of mine. She taught in the Memphis City Schools for over 30 years, and I'm in the process of giving her a benefit concert the first Sunday in June. I was just, my question is, what do I need to do? Can I get something from the city school to recognize her for her over 30 years' worth of service in the Memphis City Schools? She's taught at Treadwell, Cragmont, and Tresman Schools, and we're putting, and I've gathered like 100 of her old students who she's taught, and we're gonna get together and put on the benefit.
Ms. Briscoe, that's a very simple request. We will have somebody that can help you take care of that. Okay?
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
We appreciate you coming out to this meeting to do that. Coleman Settles?
My name is Siobhan Settles, 3290 Garver Road, 38128. I'm a parent and a grandparent. I feel that we should deserve a search. I mean, you have 21 pages of job openings, and this should be the first one. So it wouldn't cost anybody their taxpayer money to list this position as one of those qualifying jobs. Because parents deserve the right to select the right person to sit at you all table. Thanks.
Next three speakers, Felicia Robinson, Pearlene Curry, and Anes Walker.
Good evening. SES board members, faculty, parents, teachers, and staff. My name is Ms. Felicia Robinson. I reside at 1042 Hudson, Memphis, Tennessee, 38127, the Mitchell High Community. I'm a proud parent of three children, which graduated from Tresman High School. I'm also a grandparent of five, three of which attend SES. I feel SES does not have our children's, grandchildren's, or children's best interests at hand. Our children have left behind too long, and it's time for a change. So, I feel, why not do a search? We deserve the best just as well you do for your children. We need a search.
Good evening, Board. My name is Anes Walker. I reside at 2483 Lisa Avenue. I'm a proud member of Memphis Lift. I stand before the Board today demanding a search for the school board Superintendent position. Our children's future, our state. We, we want great representation and accountability for our children. Someone who can relate to the needs of the parents, and better school options for our kids. Someone who's sensitive to the many disadvantages that goes on in the homes of our children that stop their learning process. I, along with my many Memphis Lift team members, don't believe that this Board is doing our children any justice by not demanding a search. We want a search. We want a search.
Marvell Madison, Erica Wilson, and Bishop Lampkin.
My name is Pearlene Curry. I reside at 1841 Wilcrest. I'm with the Memphis Lift team, and I'm here tonight on behalf of my grandchildren. I have 11 grandchildren, and I have yet to see one graduate from the CSC schools. Their educational level does not coincide with their grade level, grade level. Right now, we have a Superintendent who has had many allegations against him, but we deserve a search for a Superintendent. We deserve the best for our children, just like you want the best for yours, we want the best for ours. We will not settle for anything less. We deserve the best, just as you do for your children.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Marvell Madison. I live at 1680 in the Frazier area. I'm here today to command a search. The reason why? We vote for President, we vote for Congress, why we can't have a search for a Superintendent? Uh, Dr. Ray, uh, don't know too much about him, but we still demand a search. We search for everything else, and why we can't have a search for him?
Erica Wilson?
Good evening. My name is Erica Wilson. My address is 3002 Robidunn. I am the mother of three students at Granville T. Woods, and I also serve as the PTO president. I am here to speak on behalf of the parents of the 440 students of GTW, and ask you to vote to keep our school open. We are a young school. We only have two years of test scores, and in that time, we have grown from a Level 1 to a Level 4 school. The growth shows that we are moving in the right direction. Our kids are also exposed to a true STEM program. We are only one of two elementary or middle schools selected to take part in the Navy Sea Perch underwater robotics program. Our kids are also all members of 4H through the University of Tennessee. We would ask that you give us the same opportunity for success as charter schools authorized through the ASD, who have to appear on a priority list at least twice before eligible for closure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Good evening. My name is Charles Lampkin. I live at 3189 McIntosh Cove, Memphis, Tennessee, 38111. I'm speaking this evening because on behalf of the fact that I have six children in SES schools. I'm well vested in the educational process. I have an 11th grader, a 10th grader, a 4th grader, a 3rd grader, a 1st grader, and a kindergartner. I believe in quality education from, and I believe that we need the best. I know that Dr. Ray is a great guy. I know that he believes in first-class education. I think that he'll do a great job. However, I also believe that we need a national search, because I think that we need to look at the wide variety and get the best person. I don't say that he's not the best person, but I think that we need to look at all, look at it all across the board and get the best person. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Next three names, Wynn Earl, Todd Schaefer, and Pastor Lysimba Gray.
Good evening. My name is Wynn Earl Jr., Principal Kingsbury Elementary School, 4055 Bayless, 38108. I'm here to, to express my support for Dr. Jarvis Ray as Superintendent. I heard someone say that we deserve the best. I would concur. I would concur. We currently have that. It's already here. Dr. Ray, you have my full support. Dr. Ray has done nothing but support me and the Kingsbury Elementary community. There's not a time that I haven't, I have called him, and he has not responded. Rain, sleet, snow, slush, he's as consistent as the USPS. He, he takes care of business. His word is his word. He takes care of his own, and I know he would do the same thing for all of the students in SES. Let's stay with Ray.
Pastor Schaefer?
Good evening. My name is Todd Schaefer. I live at 855 East Drive, Memphis, Tennessee, 38108, and I'm a representative of the Shelby County School community. As an educator, I believe in Dr. Ray's vision for the district, his team of educators, and most importantly, his commitment to ensuring all students receive a high-quality education. Currently, we have a unique opportunity, and that is to appoint someone who could be easily considered a generational talent. Now, I know there are naysayers out there saying we should conduct a national search, but why conduct a national search? And we have someone that is highly qualified, understands the landscape of the community, and willing to choose students over politics. So, I would like to quickly remind everyone of a movement called Choose 901. I urge all board members to choose 901, join the movement, and let's stay with Ray for Superintendent. Thank you.
I'm gonna remind the folks in the audience, in order for us to conduct this business, I'm gonna remind everyone in the audience, I appreciate the help, but if you let me take it from here. I'm gonna remind the folks in the audience that in order for us to conduct a business that is orderly, we are asking for the cooperation of everyone that is present. Everyone deserves an opportunity to speak that has signed up. We're gonna be respectful and listen, as people have an opportunity to voice their opinion. Pastor Gray, thank you so much.
Madam Chair and members of the Board, I come before you to stand in support of Dr. Ray as our permanent Superintendent. Coalition ministers met with him, we grilled him, we questioned him, we challenged him, and he came forth with flying colors. In credentials, A+, continuity, A+, compassion for the students, A+, and commitment for the district, A+. In the words of Spike Lee, "Do the right thing, stay with Ray."
Uh, the next three names, Latisha Brown, Tina Smith, and Tanisha Heiston.
Good evening, Superintendent Ray and our board members. My name is Latisha Brown. I reside at 8654 Green Heron Lane, Memphis, Tennessee, 38018. I stand before you as principal of Alton Elementary School, standing in support of Dr. Ray, who is the heart of Shelby County schools. As I served as principal last year, my staff and I experienced, experienced an unexpected tragedy with the untimely death of one of our beloved 5th grade students due to a drive-by shooting. Dr. Ray made a personal phone call to provide encouragement, send his condolences, and walk us through the process. He supported us through this unfortunate circumstance. He sent a team to rally around us with his compassion for our school and our community. This year alone, our students have endured leaking ceilings, sat in classrooms with buckets of water and brown ceiling towels, in addition to wearing their coats due to malfunctioning heat. His response was, he will take care of it. His humanness, compassion, and servant leadership pour out daily. I stand in support of Dr. Ray.
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Tina Smith, twenty-seven ninety-five Getwell Row, Principal of Getwell Elementary School. When I think of Dr. Ray's leadership, three Rs come to mind, and that is relatable, reflective, and result-driven. When I think about relatable, he is a product of Memphis, where he has served as a teacher, assistant principal, and district personnel. When I think of reflective, collaborative meetings for the greater good of all stakeholders, and that includes the community. When I think of results-driven, streamlining equity throughout the district to reassure a quality education for all students. You want the best for your children? So does he. The question I ponder, why look any further when greatness is before you?
Tanisha Heiston, thirty-one thirty-five Ridge Road, Principal Bell Forest Community School. Tonight's meeting is about choices. SCS, Shelby County Schools. SCS, stable, consistent, secured. I represent myself as a school principal who has an unearthing need for structure and a secured future. During these turbulent and uncertain times surrounding teacher shortages, vouchers, and testing, I want to focus on the stability of this organization. I stand here not only in support of Dr. Ray, but for the overarching purpose of a strong, stable, and consistent school district. Tonight's meeting is about choices. Let's choose to remain stable and stay with Dr. Ray.
Anthony Coleman, Regional Fintrist, and Sherman Newsom.
Good evening. I am Anthony Coleman and I reside at two seven zero Dubois Drive, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one zero nine. And I am the PLC coach at the great West Haven Elementary School. I am here in support of Dr. George Ray. Dr. Ray has been an individual who is leading, learning, and loving without limits. He's leading his leadership team that is in place, he's learning the curriculum, and he's also loving without limits. He is a product of the 901. He supports the 901. So, on my, on behalf of myself and fellow educators, in the words of the OJs, give the people what they want.
Excuse me. Regional Fintrist, um, fifty-five ten Lake Branch Cove, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one zero nine. I just want to come down and say, stay with Ray. Stay with Ray. You know, the last six years, education has been reformed to a lot of different models, in particular with a business model. And then the last six years, under the previous administration, what I heard from educators was that we need an educator. The, the business model succeeded. It did what it needed to do. Clues was, schools were closed, positions were cut, things were cut, and it was a lot of growing pains with it. However, as today, as where we stand today, we need an educator who understands curriculum, who understands instruction, who understands culture, who understands climate. We have our man right here. Let's stay with Ray. Go, brother.
Good evening, Board. My name is Sherman Newsom, eleven seventy-nine James Street, right off of Macklemore. I live in the soul of South Memphis. And I would like to say that a search won't hurt. And also, I would like to say, I had a thirteen-year-old at home, couldn't read until he found Memphis Delta Preparatory. Now, back to this search. See, this ain't no game while y'all smiling. This is serious about these babies. I told my wife, The Children of the Corn, I said, that movie, they just remade it. That's got to be a sign. You got babies killing each other every day. They just found a kid down the street from my house. If you do not do that search, what you're going to come up with is about three, four thousand of me. I've been a juvenile thirty-six times and I have twelve convicted felonies. I've changed my life seventeen years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Newsom. Thank you. I'm going to call the next three speakers, Valerie Brown, Joyce Lindsey, and Sonya Payne.
Thank you. Good evening. Valerie Brown, nine zero seven Seattle Street, Memphis, Tennessee, Anisdale Community, Raquel Area. I am here on behalf of Memphis Delta Preparatory Charter School. By living in the community, as being a mother, I have a child that have graduated from Memphis City Schools. I have a child that graduated from Chevy County School. I stay in the heart of South Memphis, Raquel, Anisdale area. I am here in support of keeping that school open for our community kids. They need it, as well as the parents on the outside that's here that couldn't get in, as well as the teachers and the parents that's here now. Please keep Memphis Delta Preparatory School open, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, interim superintendent, school board members. My name is Joyce Lindsey. I live at twenty-five fifteen Keane Road, three eight one zero six. A parent, a retired educator, and a volunteer for Chevy County Schools. I just want to take a moment to discuss Dr. Ray, why he should be our superintendent. Dr. Ray inspires people to enjoy working smart and not hard and continuing to work when hours are gone down. He fosters an incredible team atmosphere, and he does it while maintaining a strong sense of honesty. As a community advocate, I have worked with him, and he has always supported the Alseball community and the Cherokee community, providing resources whenever needed. I am a firm believer that a nationwide search for a superintendent is not needed here. He is in our midst. Dr. Ray, we want you.
Good evening. Board Chair Avan, Board Members, Superintendent Ray. My name is Sonya Payne. I reside at seventy-four seventy-four Bordeaux Circle South, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one two five. I just want to take a moment to speak on why we should keep our current superintendent, Dr. Ray. Dr. Ray is a passionate individual. He's passionate about making sure students, teachers, and administrators have what they need to be successful. He has been a teacher, teacher assistant, assistant principal, and he has overseen academic operation and much more. He's no stranger to our school system. John Maxwell said it best, that a leader is one who knows the way, goes the way, and shows the way. Let's continue our current, let's continue with our current superintendent, Dr. Joyce Ray. I read a good book that says, there is a time and season for everything. There is a time to keep Dr. Ray. Thank you.
Elijah Sledge. Jeremika Williams, Alexis Gwynn Miller.
Good evening, Board. Elijah Sledge, twenty-eight seventy-one Vista View, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one two seven. Frustration, confusion, fear, anger are the feelings that I have right now. And you all, well, not you, but the seat and the power that you hold directly affects me, my family, and my community. And just like when you put your keys in the hand of your new teenage driver, I'm a little nervous about this educational system right now. You're evolving too slow and too many of our children are being left behind. It's like our children are suffering and can't wait until you learn how to make ASD, SES, and IZONES all work together in one system. Our children can't wait until twenty twenty-five's new model. Our children are suffering and they leaving us right now. We need to make radical changes now, and we ain't going nowhere. We gonna be here and we gonna be here to make you all do your job until our parent voice can be heard.
Again, audience participant. We do have to have order while we're conducting this business meeting. Ms. Williams.
Good evening. My name is Jeremika Williams. My address is twenty-one forty Charging Road. I'm here to speak as a former student at Kirby Middle while Dr. Ray served as the assistant principal. While at Kirby Middle, Dr. Ray always taught us that we were more of just students in the school, we were a family. He enlisted in us that the value of public education and often emphasized that failure was not an option. Dr. Ray has proven to be a leader in leadership and committed to all students in Shelby County Schools. Had it not been for Dr. Ray encouraging us, my path would have been different. I am now employed with Shelby County Schools. I encourage you to make the right decision and stay with Ray. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Alexis Gwynn Miller and my address is twenty-two twelve Voluntine. I am co-chair of the Education Equity Task Force for MICA, Memphis Interfaith Coalition for Action and Hope. First, I want to take a moment on behalf of MICA, Stanford Children, and 901 to thank all of you that joined us to hear about our equity-based budget request for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. We look forward to connecting with the rest of you. We've been working together as concerned citizens, as faith-based organizations, as educators and community members over a year on several areas of equity in Shelby County. We know that historically, there are deep disparities, but we are not here today to call those out.
Thank you. Damon Curry Morris, Sam Shaw, and Peden Curry. Perlene Curry.
Damon Curry Morris, seventeen twenty-four Preston Street, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one oh six. Board members, interim superintendent, we have a job. And as an elected official, your job is the people. Your number one job is the people. The people say they want a search. We need to do a search. Good, bad, or indifferent, or whatever we have sitting on the board now, you're doing the people an injustice if they're asking. My main problem is, you telling me how to spend my money as a taxpayer. My second problem is, you telling me what you're going to give me as a taxpayer. Y'all have a good day.
My name is Dr. Sam Shaw. I live at twenty-four sixteen Willinghurst Drive, Germantown, Tennessee. I serve as principal at Berclair Elementary School. You can bring in compassion from outside of Memphis, but you cannot bring in easily passion. This man loves our students. He knows our students. This man has passion for the schools. He knows our schools, our communities. For fifteen years, they tell me as principal, I'm responsible for all seven hundred children. I have rarely called a superintendent, but when I did call him, he called me back on a Saturday over a child safety issue. No one else called me. If I call anybody in these tables here or anybody's central office, I need a return phone call. This is the leader we need. He's got the passion and the love. Thank you.
Ms. Shaw. Perlene Shaw. I'm sorry, Perlene Curry. Okay, we're going to move on to the next three names, John Bush, Kelvin Meeks, and Nichella Johnson.
Good evening. My name is John Bush. I'm the principal of Douglas High School. When I think about Dr. Ray and his leadership, I've been in my seat for three years, and since I've been in the seat, I've had to call on him a few times. I can honestly say he's always given me sound advice, has always thought about students first. When we think about leadership and we think about the qualities of an individual, we think about somebody that's resilient, we think about somebody that's passionate, and we think about somebody that always makes decisions about students. Dr. Ray is that person. Every decision that he makes has always been and always will be about students. When you have people at the leadership at the helm who understands and who can relate to that, we as a district, we already in the right place. We don't need to go out and search and find anybody else to tell us how to run our school district. My vote is to stick with Ray. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kelvin Meeks, nine thirty-six Mount Piers Road, Memphis, Tennessee. Educator, principal. I've been a principal for thirteen years, and I don't know if I would have had that opportunity if it had not been for Dr. Ray. Back in the day when they had alternative school, Southeast Prep, before they got rid of it, Dr. Ray chose me as the leader of Southeast Prep. It was the beginning of something new. Those schools were for last key kids, kids that were alternative kids, they say, that couldn't make it. Dr. Ray changed the mindset. We had a situation that kids really could learn, they were overage for grade, and Dr. Ray trusted me as a leader. And I've been in the principalship for thirteen years and I appreciate what he done for me. And Dr. Ray, this is the search.
Good evening. Nichella Johnson, one thirty South Front Street, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one zero three. As a parent and a product of legacy MCS, I've come to realize that we have a very unique district. With this in mind, we need a leader with experience in education, a plan to improve schools, and a clear vision of what college and career-ready, cooperative, collaborative, and critical-thinking students look like. Hashtag, stay with Ray. As a candidate with proven experience to do the job, a record of advocacy for our students, and the wisdom to listen to educators about what works in our classrooms, Dr. Ray is the perfect example of where you begin isn't where you'll end. Stay with Ray. We need a leader who emphasizes the efficient use of resources, personnel, and data to break down resistance and drive systemic changes. One who empowers his board and personnel to set goals, measure results, develop accountability, and support planning. Stay with Ray.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Our last three speakers, Deborah Atkins, Pastor Melvin Watkins, and Dr. Keith Norman.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Atkins and I'm representing Barrett's Chapel. I have, I'm a very big advocate, as many of you know, for the children of the city. And I believe that Dr. Ray, he is going to make changes that are going to be really awesome. I think we're going to have a lot of academic gains. We need to stick with one program and one curriculum, and we need, instead of pulling somebody from the outside in. Our teacher morale was low the last four months. I've seen the morale just spike up. I've seen teachers excited to come to work. I've seen teachers excited for their administration, and I just don't think that you need to search outside of our community. Dr. Ray knows our children. He went to school in Memphis. He was an assistant principal, he was a principal, and now he, well, he worked at the board, and now he's our interim superintendent.
Good evening. Melvin Watkins, six twenty Park Rose, Memphis, Tennessee. And I'm here to urge the board to stay with Ray. And I'm here to urge the board to stay with Ray. A man named John asked a man named Jesus, are you the one or shall we look for another? Jesus sent back the blind see to death here, the lame walk. In other words, Jesus said, just look at the evidence. You don't have to do a search, just look at the evidence. And I'm urging the board to look at the evidence of what we have here in Dr. Ray and stick with Ray. There's no need to look for another. Stay with Ray.
The door to church is open. My name is Keith Norman. I live at 7480 Woodrail Cove. I am a graduate of Legacy MCS schools and Shelby County schools. I'm here to advocate, first of all, for the parents who are here. I think we ought to applaud them for the parental engagement that we see because this is important for our school system. Very quickly, let me say though, there comes a time when we have to put down our swords and work together. It's time to collaborate for all of us to come together because right now, there's some candidate outside of Memphis Googling facts about Memphis trying to get a job when we have a candidate who is right here ready to start that job in the morning. Funds are being distributed in Nashville, Tennessee, and our kids are not being included. We have to think about having someone who is ready to go to work on day one and who can hit the ground running. Let's stay with Dr. Ray.
We're going to move on in our agenda. Now is on the, um... Yes, we're going to actually move to, the question is now on the approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes, we're now approving minutes for 7.1, approval of the March 26, 2019 Business Meeting. 7.2, approval of the minutes for April 23 Work Session. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Now can I get a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Ms. Love, second by Ms. McKissick. Seeing no lights, can we get a roll call vote?
Board member McKissick?
Aye.
Board member Orgel?
Aye.
Board member Woods?
Aye.
Board member Love?
Aye.
Board member McCormick?
Aye.
Board member Green?
Aye.
Board member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board member Coleman?
Aye.
Board chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
The minutes are approved. We can now move to the items. Okay, we're going to now move on to 12.1, Maxine Smith HVAC. 12.1, Maxine Smith HVAC, and 12.2, Oak Haven HVAC. Superintendent? Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 12.1 and 12.2 HVAC ratifications. I think we had the wrong contract here. I think this was passed in March. Just in full transparency, wanted to bring it back before the board for approval.
Could I get a motion to ratify these two items, please? A motion by Mr. McCormick. A second by Ms. Bibbs. Did I get that right? Okay. Roll call vote.
Board member McKissick?
Aye.
Board member Orgel?
Aye.
Board member Woods?
Aye.
Board member Love?
Aye.
Board member McCormick?
Aye.
Board member Green?
Aye.
Board member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board member Coleman? Board chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
The motion is ratified. We are now moving to, to, these are items that we have moved up just for clarity to the listening public. 11.20 Charter School Revocations.
Madam Chair, these particular charter schools, they were identified as priority schools on the state of Tennessee's 2018 list per Tennessee Code 4913122. City University School Girls Preparatory, Dubois Elementary of Arts and Technology, Dubois Middle of Arts and Technology, Dubois Middle of Leadership and Public Policy, Granville T. Woods Academy of Innovation Charter Schools, and Memphis Delta Preparatory Charter Schools for Revocation.
All right, I would need to get a motion for this particular item. Ms. Love?
Motion.
And this is a motion to take these as a full slate?
No, I wanted to make a motion that we vote on, divide the vote, divide the school, the question, the school closures, one by one.
Okay, can I get a second? A second by Ms. Green. Reverend Al Green. Dr. Reverend Al Green. Make sure I get all her titles correct. And so this is on dividing the question. Can I get a roll call vote on dividing? This is aye that you are in favor of dividing the question, no, and you are not in favor of dividing the question.
Board member McKissick?
Aye.
Board member Orgel?
Aye.
Board member Woods?
Aye.
Board member Love?
Aye.
Board member McCormick?
Aye.
Board member Green?
Aye.
Board member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board member Coleman?
Aye.
Board chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
Okay, that is affirmative, that is approved for us to divide the question. At this time, we will take each of the individual schools and this will be as a roll call vote. This is again for the closure per Tennessee Code annotated 4913-122. All right, we're moving first on, I'm sorry, I can't see them. City University School Girls, City University, City University Girls Preparatory. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Ms. Love, can I get a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Green. This is a move, this is a motion to approve the administration's recommendation for closure. Are there any questions and/or comments? Roll call vote.
Board member McKissick?
Aye.
Board member Orgel?
Aye.
Board member Woods?
No.
Board member Love?
No.
Board member McCormick?
Aye.
Board member Green?
Aye.
Board member Bibbs?
No.
Board member Coleman? Board chair Avant?
Aye.
You have five votes in the affirmative and four in the negative.
That motion is approved. We're now moving on to Dubois Elementary of Arts and Technology. Can I have a motion? A motion by Ms. McKissick, a second by Mr. McCormick. Seeing no lights, roll call vote.
Board member McKissick?
Aye.
Board member Orgel?
Aye.
Board member Woods?
Aye.
Board member Love?
Aye.
Board member McCormick?
Aye.
Board member Green?
Aye.
Board member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board member Coleman?
Aye.
Board chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
That motion is approved. Dubois Elementary, Dubois Middle School of Arts and Technology. Can I get a motion? A motion by Mr. McCormick, a second by Ms. Doris Coleman. This is Dubois Middle School. Can I get, seeing no lights? I want to make sure to observe if there are comments or questions. Seeing no lights, roll call vote.
Board member McKissick?
Aye.
Board member Orgel?
Aye.
Board member Woods?
Aye.
Board member Love?
Aye.
Board member McCormick?
Aye.
Board member Green?
Aye.
Board member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board member Coleman?
Aye.
Board chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
That motion is approved. Fourth, fifth, third, fourth school, Dubois Middle Leadership and Public Policy. Can I get a motion? A motion by Mr. McCormick, can I get a second? A second by Reverend Al, Dr. Reverend Al Green. Ms. Bibbs, should I be recognized?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted a point of clarification because we started the vote without the commentary of what we had last week, was just designating which ones were level four and level five. So some of my new board members are confused as to what they just voted on. So I think, so we missed that. I thought this was an opportunity for us to have the conversation around who was level four and who was level five. We didn't have that conversation. I know Ms. Love brought that up last week, so we've missed a whole.
So I think if the administration wanted to make some comments about the level four, level five, at each time as we are divided, because we have divided the question, if there are comments to be made, it is really on the division of each school at this point because we voted to divide the question. So if there are comments that need to be made on, we're currently, and if there are questions for the administration, let's do that at this time. Ms. Love?
So it's not a question, it's more of a, just for clarity. If the, if a board member has not voted in the way that they wanted to vote because of the confusion of the level four and fives, what's the process of them changing that vote?
Politer.
So can we go back to that at the end, once we finish the votes?
Yes.
If there is a board member that was on the prevailing side, if they wish to change their vote, they can?
Yes.
Okay.
So again, this is approval and we have, at the beginning onset of this discussion, we divided the question in order to vote on each of the schools individually. So as we take a motion and a second, if there are comments that need to be made, please do that at this time. That's, that's why I'm asking if there are comments or questions. As we take each individual school, please make sure to turn on your light if you do have a question or a comment to make, okay? So we're currently on middle, okay. Let me, I'm clarifying which school that we're on. And then if you want to go back after the, at the end of this, this is, board members, just to be clear, if you would like to change your vote because you were on the prevailing side and you'd like to vote in a different direction, we will do that at the end of this slate, at this time, okay?
But that's not my question.
We are at Dubois Middle of Leadership, Dubois Middle of Leadership and Public Policy. And there was a motion by Mr. McCormick and a second by Reverend Dr. Al Green. Ms. Bibbs?
Thank you, Chair. So my question still stands. I still want to know, we're saying the name of the school, but we did not receive who's level four and level five. So when you say the school, can you at least tell us if they are level four or level five?
Okay, and I'm going to turn that over to the administration to make sure to provide any clarity and information about that.
Mr. Leon?
Dubois Middle School of Leadership and Public Policy is not a level four or a five.
Okay, do you, do you want, at this time for Chief Leon, just to go back through each school?
Let's go back through each school.
Just, and this is just stating the name and then level four or level five, okay? Or what that level is.
City University Girls Preparatory was a level four T-VAS composite. Dubois Elementary School of Arts and Technology was a level three composite. Dubois Middle School of Leadership and Public Policy was a three composite. Dubois Middle School of Arts and Technology was a five composite. Granville, you want to go through the whole slate even if we haven't received?
Yes.
Granville T. Woods Academy of Innovation was a five composite. And Memphis Delta Prep is a three composite.
Okay, so now the question, we are, if there are any other questions for Dubois Middle of Leadership Public Policy, which was a composite level?
Three.
Three. Roll call vote.
Board member McKissick?
Aye.
Board member Orgel?
Aye.
Board member Woods?
Aye.
Board member Love?
Aye.
Board member McCormick?
Aye.
Board member Green?
Aye.
Board member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board member Coleman?
Aye.
Board chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
That is approved. We're now on Granville T. Woods Academy, which was level?
Five.
Level five. Can I get a motion? A motion by, in order for us to discuss, we have to make a motion and a second. A motion by Mr. McCormick and a second by Ms. Love. So board members, if there are, if this, there's a question or concern at this time. Ms. Coleman?
I thought that if they were level four or five, we weren't voting to close them. We were working a plan out that was supposed to work with them if they were a level four or level five.
And I think that's where the board would need to make a vote of no. And if it does not pass, then that is with the administration, then working with them on a plan was the understanding. If there's something different than the understanding, let's just go ahead and make sure to provide that now. Clarities, so that board members are clear on that.
Brad, can you shed some more light on it?
My understanding was that the board was going to vote on each of these schools. And any school that was not voted to be revoked, we'd work on an action plan with them. But if the board votes to revoke, then they would obviously be revoked.
So if, board members, at this time, if you are not interested and you want to make sure that there is follow-up with an action plan, then vote no on the closure so that there can be a list of schools, if there are any, that need to go back to the administration. Ms. Love?
So yeah, just for clarity, last week I did state that I'm in support of making sure that schools that are level four and five, charter schools remain open, with the exception of Memphis Delta Prep because it does not have three years of data. So I will be voting no to closure for Memphis Delta Prep because they do not currently have three years' worth of data.
Mr. Woods?
Madam Chair, I just want to bring clarity. The administration brought a slate of schools for us to close. We as a board get to vote our conscience for whatever reasons. You may have toured the school, you may see reasons that the school have seen growth. But I don't want to convolute the fact that Ms. Love bringing, recommending, her personal recommendation that we keep four and five schools open is a requirement. And so I think, I think that's what she wanted to make sure we're being clear on, is that these recommendations are before this body to consider on their merit. And the question, the decision to divide them is to take them individually. And I think that's what we're doing. I thought you were doing a fantastic job. And if Ms. Love want to keep schools that are four and five open, board members get to do that.
Ms. McKissick?
I have a question regarding Granville T. Woods. How long has it been open again? Can you?
Yes. This is Granville T. Woods' third year of operation, or fourth year of operation, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, so we, are there any other? All right. Roll call vote. This again is on Granville T. Woods.
Board member McKissick?
No.
Board member Orgel?
Aye.
Board member Woods?
No.
Board member Love?
And this is to keep the school open? No.
Board member McCormick?
Aye.
Board member Green?
Aye.
Board member Bibbs?
No.
Board member Coleman?
No.
Board chair Avant?
No.
You have three votes in the affirmative and six in the negative.
Okay, so that does not approve. We are, that means that this school has not been approved for closure. And I'm assuming that as board members commented before, this means that this needs to move to the administration to work with them on an action plan of correction. Now again, this is in collaboration with our charter school office as well as the policy that has been put in place that gives board members parameters, policy that will be put in place to give board members parameters about what those things are, benchmarks for schools moving through a correction plan. Is that correct?
Correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, we are now moved on to Memphis Delta Prep School. Can I get a motion? A motion?
Motion. Second.
A motion by Mr. McCormick and a second by Mr. Woods. Okay, Mr. Woods?
Madam Chair, just want to echo Ms. Love's comment. The school's been open only three years. We work to, to work to change legislation to be able to give boards some leeway. We worked to, to work to change legislation to, to be able to give boards some leeway. Obviously, it's up to us, obviously, if we want to keep it open or closed, but I heard the passionate comments, mostly in support of Ray, but also some parents who came out to speak in support of keeping the school open. I plan to vote to give them a second chance.
And also, Memphis Delta Prep, there's not the one year of data for that school. There's not the three years, so we need to consider that. I plan on voting to keep it open also because we don't have enough information for it.
Okay. All right, roll call vote.
Board Member McKissick? Board Member Orgel?
No.
Board Member Woods?
No.
Board Member Love?
No.
Board Member McCormick?
No.
Board Member Green?
No.
Board Member Bibbs?
No.
Board Member Coleman?
No.
Board Chair Avant?
No.
You have nine votes in the negative.
That motion to keep the school open is approved. So, again, there are two schools so far. Now, board members, if there are any schools that you would like to revisit because you were on the affirmative side, okay, that means that you were on the prevailing vote, I need to request information about that now.
Yes, I would like to go back and revote City because they are a level four, correct?
City University?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. McKissick? The, the motion is to reconsider the vote for City University.
I motion that we reconsider the vote for City University.
There a second? A second by Ms. Coleman. Okay, Ms. McKissick?
Can you please provide how long City University Girls Prep has been open? This is to reconsider the vote?
Six years.
Thank you.
Ms. Green?
Okay, that was just.
Okay, so, does, do we have to revote? This parliamentarian?
The motion to reconsider is the magic motion that takes you back to the moment before the vote was taken originally. So, it'll be re-voted at that time. It will take a majority vote to do it. You can ask questions, it's not debatable, but you can ask questions.
My point was, we have to first vote to reconsider.
The motion before you is to reconsider that vote.
Right, and I was just asking, is since usually when a motion, you can only speak on the motion to reconsider, not the merits of the school.
Well, I.
And then, and then, once it passes, then you can, then you, then you would go back, and then you could talk about how long the school's been open and.
Yeah, that, that works for the motion to postpone. It doesn't work for the motion to reconsider, unfortunately. Okay.
Okay, so we have point of clarification. So, at this point, we are voting on the motion to reconsider the vote. Can I get a roll call vote? And if you are voting aye, you're voting yes to reconsider the vote. If you're voting no, you're voting no to reconsider the vote. Roll call.
Board Member McKissick?
No.
Board Member Orgel?
No.
Board Member Woods?
Yes.
Board Member Love?
Yes.
Board Member McCormick?
No.
Board Member Green?
Yes.
Board Member Bibbs?
Yes.
Board Member Coleman?
Yes.
Board Chair Avant?
Yes.
You have six votes in the affirmative and three in the negative.
Okay, that motion is approved to reconsider the vote. And at this time, we are reconsidering the vote for City University School with clarity that this school, before we took the vote, we didn't have clarity on that rating, so City University is a four. At this time, if you are voting aye, you are voting yes to close the school. If you are voting no, you are voting no to close City University Girls Preparatory. Roll call vote.
Yeah.
If there is discussion. Mr. Orgel?
Ms. Leon? Go, go through this again while we're, while.
Board member, you are more than welcome to ask questions, and we're going to give a lot of time.
Go through this again, why, after six years, what the, the statistics are here, and why you brought this up for closure. I know the student bringing up closure, the state, because it's on the priority list, so it's in the bottom 5% of schools in the state, said that it should be closed, so, and we've got some latitude. I just want to understand.
So, the, the school's on the priority list because it's in the bottom 5%. But in addition to that, I think the administration feels strongly this, the school should be revoked because of its history of poor performance. In the last year alone, only 3.2% of the kids passed the language arts exam, only 3.2% passed the math exam, which is a significant decline from the year before. So, we feel strongly that this school should be revoked because we don't think that it's likely to reach the goals that it set forth in its own application, which was 75% of students reading at or above grade level, or 80% of its scholars reaching proficiency in other subjects.
In the times we've had charters that you've worked here, have we ever had a school after that period of time turn around with, that you can remember?
There was one school that has had a pretty remarkable turnaround, but that's the only school that I can think of, and that was Mace. Mace.
Mason.
Mace, Memphis Academy of Science and Engineering.
Mason, I said Mason, I said Mason. And it's the bottom 5% of class. In language arts, our average for the test for the SCSY would be what? You said 3.2% for this school.
Right. So, it'll take me a second to pull up our district average, but what we do have is where City University would rank in terms of its overall achievement if we're looking at achievement measures, and they would rank 134th out of 145 schools. And then, against charter schools, they'd be 29th out of 31 charter schools for achievement only.
What are the other two that rank below that?
I don't have that in front of me, but I, I.
Were they up for closure too?
They're not.
Why not? Because?
I have to look into the data to see.
Got you, right, you said, okay, so 3.2% passed the language arts?
Yes.
Got you, okay, thanks.
So, I just want to go back to what I stated earlier, dealing with the schools that were a level four and five. And I also want to make sure that I remind my fellow board members that we have schools that were level four and fives, and the state gave us the opportunity to keep those schools in our possession. One school in particular, three years ago, was the worst performing middle school in the state of Tennessee, which was Grandview Heights Middle School in my district. Today, it is no longer on the priority list. So, I believe things can change with a strong academic plan in place and the support that the school needs. Thank you.
Sitting, seeing no more lights, we are now at the vote for City University. Roll call vote.
Board Member McKissick?
No.
Board Member Orgel?
City University. Aye, to means close, no means no to the closure. Aye is yes to the closure, no is no to the closure.
Board Member Woods?
No.
Board Member Love?
No.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Green?
No.
Board Member Bibbs?
No.
Board Member Coleman?
No.
Board Chair Avant?
No.
You have two votes in the affirmative and seven in the negative.
Okay, so, this is just a note to the administration, we now have three schools that we will need to work closely with in order to create academic plans, and I think it is imperative that we have very clear in policy about the benchmarks that we have set now that we have taken schools off of the closure list, of how that works and making sure that they're able to reach those benchmarks and what the expectations of this board are.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The team will go, work hard to get the plans up and going.
All right, we now have moved one other item up, and this is a resolution. Ms. Love, do you want to read that into the record?
Thank you, Chair. This is a resolution to suspend the search for a superintendent of schools and name Dr. George M. Ray as superintendent. Whereas pursuant to the Tennessee Code, indicated 49-2-301 and 49-2-203, each local board of education is authorized to and is the sole authority in appointing a director of schools, superintendent. And whereas the Shelby County Board of Education, hereafter referred to as Board, Policy Number 1002 provides, "The selection process and appointment of the superintendent of schools is a function of the Board. The Board shall seek to employ the person it believes can most effectively translate into action the policies of the Board and the goals of the community and the professional staff. At the Board's discretion, it may commence the superintendent selection process and/or appointment procedures after the incumbent superintendent were app, were applicable and the public of its intent to conduct a superintendent search and/or appoints a superintendent. A superintendent search is open to all qualified candidates. The Board, in its discretion, may cease the selection process at any point, and whereas Board Policy Number 1002 further provides, 'The Board of Education shall appoint a person to serve as superintendent of schools who meets at least the qualifications described in Policy Number 1003, Superintendent qualifications and any additional qualifications criteria approved by the Board. Following the appointment, the superintendent shall enter into a contract with the Board of Education. This renewable contract shall be for a period of up to four years and shall specify compensation, benefits, and other terms of employment. And whereas the Board is the sole authority on school matters within the county, and the superintendent of schools is subordinate to the Board and charged with carrying out the Board's vision and goals. And whereas the Board shall seek to employ and hold accountable the person it believes can most effectively translate into action the policy of the Board, policies of the Board, and the goals of the community and the professional staff. And whereas on December 12, 2018, the Board voted unanimously for Dr. George M. Ray to become interim superintendent of Shelby County Schools upon the departure of former Superintendent Dorsey E. Hopson II. And whereas Dr. Ray, a native Memphian, is a product of Shelby County Schools and has committed his life to the betterment of Memphis and Shelby County. And whereas Dr. Ray has diligently served the district for 22 years and risen through the ranks in his leadership roles and responsibilities. And whereas Dr. Ray has displayed the talents, skills, and leadership abilities to assume the role as superintendent. And whereas the Board has heard from countless teachers, students, school leaders, parents, and community members about the positive qualities of Dr. Ray. And whereas the district is confronted with numerous high-impact issues requiring immediate attention from permanent leadership, including but not limited to the ongoing fiscal challenges presented by a history of incomplete funding for Tennessee's basic education program, a proliferation of unfunded mandates that scratched dollars intended for serving children beyond their expected uses, the pending creation of a Tennessee Public Charter School Commission, the emergence of vouchers as an ominous example of privatization of public education dollars, and an overwhelming need to focus district efforts on addressing the challenges of the Every Student Succeed Act, otherwise known as ESAL, while ensuring equity. Whereas time is of the essence, and the Board does not feel it can afford to have the district held at a standstill while a national search progresses or unnecessarily spend money on a search when an exceedingly qualified candidate is currently serving as the interim superintendent. Be it therefore resolved that the Board dispense with and cease all efforts to conduct a national search for a permanent superintendent and after appropriate notice to the public of its intent to appoint a superintendent. The Board shall appoint Dr. George M. Ray, who meets the qualifications described in state law, board policy, and any additional qualifications and criteria approved by the Board to serve as superintendent of schools, and that following the appointment, the Board shall enter into a contract with Dr. George M. Ray, which shall be for a period of up to four years, including the time served as interim superintendent, by negotiating appropriate amendments to the current contract of employment between Dr. George M. Ray and the Shelby County Board of Education. Be it further resolved that the terms and conditions for the position of superintendent shall be negotiated in the amended contract between said parties by no later than 30 calendar days from the date of this resolution.
We need a motion?
Motion carried.
A motion by Ms. Green and a second by Mr. McCormick at this time. I'll allow for any questions or comments. Mr. Orgel?
I was a huge proponent of hiring Dr. Ray, and I think it ended up being unanimous by our board when we were done, and I think you hit the ground running and done a fantastic job, and, and the support that, and the emails I've gotten have been overwhelming, and teachers and educators, we saw a lot of them here, some of my principals were here tonight, and you didn't call them and ask them to come, they came. I did not get a Ray Stay t-shirt or whatever, what's that t-shirt say? What did it was?
Stay With Ray.
Stay With Ray, who's got one of those?
Stay With.
Okay, they, I didn't get one of those t-shirts, because, but I know you've got a lot of supporters. The, the one thing, and I just throw this out to the board, and I, and I, and I don't think I'm the only one is. Is, is I would, I would look, because I don't want to raise, set expectations for you, and I know Ms. Love did a good job putting this together about the up to four years, because we've got to then decide, and I don't want that to be a bone of contention. So, I'm just throwing that out there. I know it says up to four years, which could mean the 18 months, which I think you've got right now, or it could be up to four years, starting from January, but I, I was just throwing that out there to see how other people felt about that, because I, Stephanie did a good job send, sending this, or Jennifer sent this to everybody, and I didn't really get a chance to read it until our earlier meeting today. So, I, I was just throwing that out there and seeing what other people thought, and I'm happy to do what everybody says, and like you know, I'm a big supporter, and I think you're doing great things.
Ms. Love?
So, thank you for that, Mr. Orgel. So, just so we're clear, are you asking just to strike out the up to four years, have the conversation, just so that the resolution is clear?
If that was the, what the, the board wanted to do, I mean, I'm, that was just my suggestion, because, or, or if there's a recommendation, somebody else hit a button if they have a recommendation. I, I just, that was the one thing that caught me in there. So, if someone else had a recommendation, get it recognized.
Mr. McCormick?
I think that the purpose of the up to four years is, the state law limits a school board from hiring a superintendent no longer than four years. So, having that in the resolution, worded up to, that's still a negotiation that could take place between the board and the superintendent to negotiate two years, three years, or up to four years. So, I don't, I don't have a problem with that language in, in the resolution, and so, I'm happy with the way it's worded.
Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just so that we can reduce any contention here, stopping the sentence after Dr. George Ray, I think still accomplishes what has to take place after the resolution pass, which is a negotiation period that will take place over the course of the next 30 days. So, to get full support of this body, I would support Mr. Orgel's recommendation in ending the sentence, because we don't want the message to be that we're voting tonight on the length of a contract. So, I do think that this, that would be the easiest solution.
Okay.
If Ms. Love would support it.
I agree.
Ms. McKissick?
I just want to share, you know, at the beginning of this process, throughout, I've been a supporter of conducting a search over the last four-plus months where I've had the opportunity to intimately observe Dr. Ray and his contributions, in addition to the 22-plus years he's had the district. But had the chance about two weeks ago to travel with Dr. Ray to Nashville to meet with the governor. And in that moment, it, his presence and how he represented for not only Shelby- his presence and how he represented for not only Shelby County Schools, traditional schools, but also charter schools and ASD, as if they were all directly, that he was intimately involved with them. It was, it was really something to see. And I wish all of you could have had the opportunity to be there in that room. And he proved that he was indeed the superintendent of the largest school district in the state, head and shoulders. And he looked the Governor straight in the eye and told him why, as a district, we oppose the Education Savings Account Proposal Bill. So it was, and then over instances over the last several months and talking with colleagues, both at the national, state, and local level, and getting perspective, in addition to many, many emails from people locally, it's clear that there is a tremendous amount of support. And I have utmost confidence that Dr. Ray can serve in this role for all of the students of Shelby County, no matter whether they are in SES, charter, or ASD.
Okay. Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to acknowledge those who came out asking for the search. I think it would be disingenuous as this body to hear all voices, if it's school closure, if it's issues with our budget. We welcome feedback from pros and cons on any position that we take. So I wanted to mention that first and foremost. The second thing I think is important to note is that whoever get the job of superintendent and is looking like it's going to be Dr. Ray, he works for us. So those who came to speak about what you want and what you need.
All right, at this time, I'm sorry, at this time, if there are any other outbursts.
We have one, Madam Chair, thank you for that.
We're going to ask them to have, just remove if there are any other outbursts, Mr. Woods, and give you an opportunity to speak.
So thank you. So you have nine elected Board members. And so those who came out to speak and hoping that they could get something better than what we already have, they get to go vote for a different Board member. And we welcome that. And so, so, so we get to pick our superintendent. It's the, it's the most important job that we have. And by, and by supporting this resolution today, Dr. Ray, you get to work for nine Board members who care about kids. To the individual who says that they want someone who supports the disadvantaged kids, those who spoke about having kids in this district, I too am one of those with kids in this district. And Superintendent Ray, you will be representing my kids and I plan to hold you accountable, Chief. And I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Ms. Love?
Thank you, Chair. What I will say too is from being a parent first, but being a Board member for the past six years, but going back to being a parent, I have a child that attends an optional school. I have a child that attends a priority school. And I am looking for someone who will not only pour into the optional school, but also pour into the priority schools. And at this time, we have that person. When we look at what's going on in Nashville, dealing with the vouchers, that we have so many organizations that are supposed to be advocating for all children are not speaking on. When we look at the charter commission bill that was passed, when we look at just the murder rate, when we look at the poverty rate, no, I'm not saying that Dr. Ray can fix that. But what I'm saying is, I think, I know that he's confident. He's confident in who he is. And he, and we can rest assured, we can rest assured that he will do what's in the best interest of our children. And Dr. Ray, I want to tell you this. On behalf of the people who have lied on you, who have slandered your name, who have accused you of things that are most definitely not true, I want to apologize for them. I want to apologize for them. Because we have more pressing things to worry about as it relates to education of our children, more pressing things to worry about than tarnish the name of an African-American man who is trying to do what's right by the citizens of Shelby County. So Dr. Ray, I stand with you one hundred percent, ten toes down.
Ms. Green?
Let me say, if we would put the energy into doing and teaching our kids positive things, we focus on negative. We need to re-channel that energy. When you see the statistics about where our black males are reading and scoring in math and the highest suspension rate, I pray that the community will join in and we will be one on one goal. Thank you.
Okay. And clarity, if there is no objection to moving, removing, which shall be a period up to from the amendment, if there is no objection to that, we can do that with consent? There's no objection? No objection? Okay. It is removed. All right. So Dr. Ray, I do want to make sure, you know, I was, of course, one of the folks who has been a proponent of a search, only in the way that we want to make sure that we're vetting all of the folks that need to come before this Board who are doing what's best for kids. I think for tonight, we have seen resoundingly that you have the support of administrators and teachers and principals within this district. And I think that is a huge component that's necessary in one's leadership. And because of that, I will be supporting the resolution tonight. I do want to urge my colleagues that the same way that we have asked for any superintendent to be accountable, that we do so in this process and that we really move forward with the evaluation piece. I think it is only for, only fair to Dr. Ray that he has some clear expectations from this Board. And if we can move forward in getting that work done that we started and that we moved with such angst, if we can move forward in getting that done, then it is only fair to Dr. Ray, because it gives him a level playing field about what our expectations are and what we have worked to align with our academic plan. He stated it in the seven next steps. I think if we, Mr. McCormick, can move quickly and expeditiously to finish that work, then it provides the, really a great runway for Dr. Ray to do the work that we are charging him to do. So with that, I will be supporting this resolution. Can I get a roll call vote?
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Orgul?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Green?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
I am staying with Ray.
All the way with Ray. Yes, yes.
And that would be the last vote. That is a aye. That is approved. That we will discontinue the search and move into negotiations with Dr. Ray as department of superintendent. Congratulations, Dr. Ray.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right. And in an effort, we still have a, we still have a business meeting. We did move those items up to the front of the agenda in order to let you all get home, let you get, let you get home at a good hour. So we want to move forward with the agenda. We are now, we are now on committee reports. Board Chairs, report. I'm going to wait till the body calms down just a little bit. We got to go to reports. All right. We're trying to move expeditiously through the rest of our meeting. So we can have people quiet down, please. We do have to complete our business meeting. All right. I'm going to ask that if you are still talking, if you could exit the auditorium just so that we can get through with our meeting. Thank you so much. All right. We're going to now move on to the committee reports. I'll start with my chair report. I just want to remind folks that we have community meetings regarding our budget, upcoming community meetings. Board members are collaborating over three districts in order for us to make sure that we get feedback, that we get feedback from the community in regards to the budget that we will have to present to the County Commission. I do want to remind the listening public that we will be before the County Commission, May twenty-ninth, and that is a week earlier than we first publicized, which was June fifth. We are moving that date up. So in order for us to get the kind of feedback we need from the public, we will be having community meetings. Please check the website for dates. I also wanted to congratulate Dr. Ray on being named the University of Memphis Alumni Award. He was awarded that this past Saturday. I guess that was a great prelude to today's meeting, for him to be named the Alumni of the Year. And we appreciate his service as a Memphian and obviously as a graduate of the University of Memphis. Well, now moving to our Academic Performance Committee Report.
Thank you, Chair. So a good portion of what we talked about in academic performance at the beginning of this month is actually on our consent agenda for today. We did discuss our KPIs at last Board meeting. We had a conversation around the ACT Playbook, which is already in place, happening this spring in our high schools, about pushing ACT scores up. Budget priorities, which is what we're going to be doing, as you mentioned previously, in community meetings. The new school naming for the combination of Goodlett-Night Road Elementary School. I now have information from every Board member so that they can actually do a vote on it. I saw Ms. McMurray in the audience. She's not here yet, but she was waiting on that from us. But we now have those and that will, they will actually vote at those schools, Night Road and Goodlett separately, to come up with their new school name. Formative assessments, RTI assessment is actually on today's agenda. And we did an academic plan update that was given by Dr. Burt.
Thank you, Ms. Bibbs. Audit, but we'll come back. Community Outreach and Engagement Committee, okay, we're going to come back. Internal Board Operations Committee Report?
Yes. Thank you, Board Chair, event. We held a meeting on Tuesday, April ninth. Several policies were discussed. They were primarily requiring statutory provisions. And the policies will be presented this evening for first reading. Our next IVO meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May seventh at four P.M.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McKissick. We'll now move on to Community Outreach and Engagement Committee Report.
Thank you, Chair. We actually had a meeting on yesterday where we had our exceptional children, the face department, recruitment, and student affairs present just an update on some of the things that they're doing. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Love. If you could go right into the Legislative Committee Report?
So I actually don't have to give you guys a report.
This may be a highlight for our listening audience.
Yes. Oh, so one of the things, well, two of the things that we're working really, really hard on is, as the listening audience may know, that the state did pass both sides of the House and the Senate Voucher Bill. We are in conversation now with our lobbyists around how we can stop this. I do want to give a shout out to our superintendent, Dr. Ray, and the superintendent of Nashville. They did write a joint letter to the Governor saying that they felt that this bill was unconstitutional, which I believe it is as well. So that's one of the, that's pretty much the biggest thing that we've been working on, dealing with the Legislative Committee. But just shout outs to Ms. Maria Stewart for making sure that we have a legislative insider addition, Shelby County School version. So thank you, Ms. Stewart, for that.
Thank you, Ms. Love. We'll now move into Audit Budget and Finance Committee Report.
Chief Johnson, you have anything you want to add? Obviously, we, we're in the thick of budget process, engaging our county commissioners. We had a great joint meeting with our commissioners as far as setting expectations around our budget priorities. Historic in nature, I want to give a shout out to Ms. Love, who had the idea of bringing us all together and using our platform of a budget committee meeting to bring that conversation to the forefront, I thought was ideal. I did want to see, Mr. Johnson, if you had any updates you want to provide around timelines, expectations, as we get prepared to, A, vote on our budget, take it out to the community, and then ultimately present it before the County Commission.
Absolutely. So on May, May twenty-ninth, we'll be presenting to the Shelby County Commission our proposed budget on May twenty-first. That will be presented to the Board formally in order to approve that. And there will be a special call. And then before then, we'll also be conducting community engagement meetings where we'll be out talking about the budget as well. And then those are kind of the major dates so far.
Okay. And so the Board Office will need to make sure, have we sent out a poll yet for the special call meeting? And we need to make sure Board members, if you haven't responded, I will respond. If Board members can respond to the spec, this is a poll for the special call meeting. Now, Board members, this is in light of the fact that we have to move our date up for us to go before the County Commission. We've moved that date up by a week. That date is actually the day after our business meeting. We want to have a special call in order for the Board to be able to get a presentation of the Board, of the budget prior to that time and that questions can be asked. So that's why we're asking for people to respond to the special call meeting in order for us to approve the budget and that we're not doing it the day before our County Commission, because if that budget doesn't approve, it's very hard for us to go before the County Commission the next day. So.
Thank you, Co-Chair of the Budget Finance Committee. No, shall I tell you, Madam Chair, you've been keeping us on task and I appreciate that. The only other thing to mention is that we do have three community meetings around the budget. So if you hadn't gotten back to the administration on those dates that you are available, so we can go out and take our message on the road. So with that, that concludes our report.
Procurement Committee Report? Thank you, Mr. Woods.
No report at this time.
Superintendent Ray's report, and then we'll go to General Counsel.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board for the decision tonight to move forward. I think it's very important that in this moment, we all move forward. And I really appreciate everyone for their words of encouragement, also for their thoughts around something as so important as the superintendent. But let me say this. I have a holy determination to do what's best for children in Shelby County Schools. I'm going to say that again. I have a holy determination to do what's best for children in Shelby County Schools. It's not about me. It's about our children. Because we have children that's being murdered in the streets. We have one in five of our students by third grade, they aren't reading at grade level. We have only twenty-three percent of our students leaving us college-ready. The time is now. And we have to move forward for the best interests of students in Shelby County Schools. So that's why I don't take this job lightly. And I'm so honored to be able to serve the students of Shelby County Schools, because I was once a student in this school district. So again, I have a holy determination to do what's right for children. Last week, we had a preview weekend that was very successful. We had over thirty-nine teachers contracts signed. So I want to thank Ms. Mall and the Human Resources Team for their hard work. They worked all Friday night and probably half of the day Saturday to recruit teachers to Shelby County Schools. I want to thank the University of Memphis for honoring me this weekend. I want to thank the University of Memphis for honoring me this weekend as their outstanding alumnus. I really appreciate Dr. Rudd and the team there for having me, and it was a great event. While on the fly, I attended the ribbon cutting event last week with various elected officials. I think Mayor Harris was there with me. This is a mobile unit that travels throughout our local community, summer learning academies, and at our schools. It will help keep our kindergarteners start school on time, working to get them required immunizations, and also help our students to be engaged over the summer, thanks to YMCA for their partnership. The 9-on-1 School Supply Drive, this is in partnership with Shelby County Education Foundation and the Memphis Police Department to host it. We are 9-on-1 School Supply Drive on May 17th, 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. at the Memphis Police Department Mount Mariah Precinct. Our proceeds will be used to purchase personal hygiene products, school uniforms, basic school supplies. And SES is 9-on-1 big event. Due to the rain, our big event was rescheduled to Wednesday, May 15th at 6:00 p.m. Join us at the Levitt Shell for a free night of food, fun, and live performances as we screen our 9-on-1 story series for the first time ever. In the news yesterday, you saw a joint press release from Superintendent Battle, and I, Superintendent Battle is the Superintendent of Metro Nashville Public Schools. And Metro Nashville Public Schools, we oppose the current version of the bill as unconstitutional. The current version is arbitrary because it targets only certain districts with low-performing schools, and there are other ones with larger or nearly the same percentages of schools performing in the bottom 10%. If the voucher bill becomes law, we are prepared to evaluate and pursue all legal remedies that ensure that the constitutional guarantees of equal protection under the law remain intact for the children and families of our district and state. That's the end of my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent. Let's move on to General Counsel report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Missed the entire microphone. Briefly, in the, in the interest of time, I do have a report, and it includes written charges for dismissal. It is included in my report for public viewing. Chair Avent, members of the Board, the process I'm about to present to the Board is commonly referred to as due process. It is the first step in the process that affords certificated employees statutory rights and protections under the Teacher of Tenure Act, which is codified at Tennessee Code Annotated Section 495511, which provides, among other things, that when charges are made to the Board of Education against a teacher, charging the teacher with offenses that would justify dismissal of the teacher, the charges shall be made in writing specifically stating the offenses that are charged and shall be signed by the party or parties making the charges. If, in the opinion of the Board, charges are of such a nature as to warrant the dismissal of the teacher, the Director of Schools shall give the teacher a written notice of this decision, together with a copy of the charges and a copy of a form, which shall be provided by the Commissioner of Education, advising the teacher as to the teacher's legal duties, rights, and recourse. That's codified at Tennessee Code Annotated Section 495512. That statute provides, a tenured teacher who receives notification of the charges pursuant to 495511 may within 30 days after receipt of the notice demand a full and complete hearing on the charges before an impartial hearing officer. I will summarize the letter, which I've indicated is included as a part of my report as requested by the Director of Schools, and after summarizing the letter, I will inquire as to whether there is a motion to authorize the issuance of the charges in order to begin the due process proceedings. Attached is written charges directed to Ethan E. Randall, just summarizing. I, Dr. Ray, Dr. Doris M. Ray, Superintendent of the Shelby County Board of Education pursuant to TCA 495511 hereby notify you, Ethan Randall, a tenured teacher with Shelby County Schools, that you will be charged with the following offenses, which include violations of Shelby County Schools' Board of Education policies that would justify dismissal from employment. A description of the charges include conduct and becoming to a member of the teaching profession as defined in TCA 495501 subsection 3, and neglect of duty as defined in TCA section 495501 subsection 8. The applicable Board policy violations here include 4002, staff ethics, 4010, harassment of employees, 4015, the acceptable use policy, 4012, disruption to the school or work environment, and finally, 6031 internet use. Again, it's pretty lengthy. It is on there for your viewing. At this time, I will inquire if there is a motion to authorize the issuance of charges in order to begin the due process proceedings.
Is there a motion? I have a motion by Ms. McKissick. I have a second by Ms. Love. Are there any questions for General Counsel? This report is, again, on Board Docs. Ms. Love?
So, thank you, General Counsel. So, dealing with this email issue, did you hire outside counsel to go back and trace this, or was this done internally?
This was done internally.
Okay, so we have the capacity to investigate unknown emails where an employee's name is being slandered?
Depending on what type of, depending on the facts and the type of information, in this particular case, we were able to trace and match the asset number of certain district equipment, and just follow the trail of this particular employee with the behavior that we were able to pinpoint.
Okay, so was this, is this the first time this has been done, or has this been done in the past?
To my knowledge, and since I've been here, this is the first time that I'm aware of.
Okay, but we do have the capacity?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I get a roll call vote?
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Green?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Coleman?
Aye.
Board Chair Avent?
Aye.
You have seven votes in the affirmative and two present not voting.
Okay, that is approved, and so it's now due process to move forward. We have, now have 9.1 proposed policies, second reading. Ms. Stewart?
As Ms. Stewart comes to the podium for us today, I wanted to first recognize that we have a new member on the policy personnel team. Her name is Annette Wade. Please stand up, Ms. Wade. She's a 25-year vet with the district, former teacher, classroom teacher, principal, made her way up, so this was an opportunity for us to hire in within. She also has a master's in policy development, so I think she'll be a great addition. So, I just wanted to make that shout out to the new addition to the policy team.
Welcome, Ms. Wade.
All right, Maria? Thank you.
For your first, for your second reading tonight, we have three policies. 3008, safe drinking water, that's a new policy. 4017, suspension dismissal of teachers, as well as 5013, promotion and retention. Those are the policies for second reading tonight.
Okay, there's, there is another policy listed on Board Doc 7? 7011?
7011, that was as a point of information, that was visitors to school and school locations. Those were just revisions to the admin rules and regulations.
Okay. All right, so at this point, just as a point of clarification, I was supposed to mention in my Chair's report, just a clarification, sorry. I want to make sure it's read into the record. Mr. Barker gave me very clear instructions, and then I still missed it. Okay. I would like to provide complete transparency that clerical corrections were made to final change order to the Tresvant HVAC item 11.10, which is approved in the consent agenda at the January 29, 2019 business meeting. This item requires no further action by the Board. However, Dr. Schultz, our Parliamentarian, has advised that I share this information with the Board and the public. I've done my due diligence. Okay, all right, we're going on to approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to? Oh, I'm sorry. It is second reading, I apologize. We need a motion to adopt the policies?
Motion.
A motion by Ms. Love, second by Ms. Doris Coleman? Seeing no lights, can we get a roll call vote?
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Love? Board Member McCormick? Board Member Green?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Coleman?
Aye.
Board Chair Avent?
Aye.
You have seven votes in the affirmative.
Those policies are approved. Now, we're moving on to the approval of the consent agenda. Oh, my goodness. Yes, proposed policies, first reading. I just want to list these that require no action. 4022, military leave. 5004, graduation requirements. 5005, advanced courses. 615, pregnant and married students. 6016, truancy. 6017, child abuse and child sexual abuse. 6022, student conduct. 6036, valedictorian and salutatorian. 6037, grading of students on hospital homebound instruction. 6051, inter-scholastic athletics. 6052, pledge volition, national anthem. 6064, student clubs and organizations. 6071, hazing. 7005, mandatory reporting procedures. There is no action that is required at this time. Now, I am gonna move us to the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any, are there any amendments to the agenda at this time? Can I get a, I have a motion by Ms. Love, a second by Ms. Green. All right, seeing no lights, I'm just gonna move, read into record these items for the consent agenda. 11.2, RTI, universal screening and assessments. 11.3, knowledge tree purchase for summer learning academy. Uh, sorry. Universal screenings and assessment, the amount of $1,419,506.25. 11.3, knowledge tree purchase for summer learning, an amount of $500,000. 11.4, curriculum associates purchase for summer learning, an amount of $350,000. 11.5, formative assessment system, an amount of $1,737,450. 11.6, fresh fruit and vegetable program, first quarter, an amount of $354,426.75. 11.7, summer, 2019 summer feeding commercial food items, the amount of $653,143.8. 11.8, SCBE, 2019 summer feeding produce, fresh fruits and vegetables, an amount of 11.9, USDA commodity process, commercial equivalent items bid, $4,158,479.65. 11.10, purchased kitchen work tables, various schools, $275,240. 11.11, complete serving line, various schools, the amount of $279,054. 11.12, CBRE hearing amendment, 3106 and 3030, Jackson Avenue, the amount of $117,700. 11.13, roof replacement, Alton Elementary School, the amount of $555,219.85. 11.14, roof replacements, Lurance K8, amount of $871,241. 11.15, CNC warehouse slab repurpose, an amount of $256,325. 11.16, CNC building, seven renovations, and the amount of $710,738. 11.17, new construction, Alcy Elementary, Baldwin and Shell Construction Company, an amount of $29,949,100. 11.18, education logistics, one, an amount of $171,950. 11.19, CNC pilot lab elevator addition, office renovation, the amount of $1,296,476.5. 11.21, resolution approving SES school board member strategic funds allocation. And the revised amount of $255,100. Do I need to read all of them individually? 299,100. Okay, and just a correction, that the amount is actually... Where is that one? Okay, the dollar amount has been updated, so it's $299,100. All right. Okay. Seeing no, let me get a Board, let me, I'm sorry. Ms. Love?
So, I'm supposed to have two schools on here? So, they'll, so you're gonna raise my amount, or do we need to state that, what it's gonna be? So, I literally just uploaded the new resolution into Board Docs. Yes.
So, the amount is different than what's currently, or is it the 299,100?
It is the 299,100.
Okay, that is reflected of Ms. Love's schools that she had it. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, can we get a Board roll call vote?
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Yes.
Board Member McCormick?
Hold on.
Thank you.
See? You're already taking charge.
I also had Cordova Elementary or Middle. Yeah, really? That was another 16,000, I think, somewhere in that neighborhood. I sent you two emails. I think, I can tell you real quick if you... I'm sorry, guys. Give me a second. I added, for Cordova Elementary is $16,500.
And if there are any other corrections, let's go ahead and make them now, Ms. Doris Coleman?
Yes, I have one for Maxine Smith. They sent their request in today for 20,000.
Okay. The new amount is $335,600. Okay, and I do want to make sure that we have had a conversation with Ms. Green to make sure that her allocations are gonna get in there, right?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure. All right, we're gonna start that roll call vote over again with the amount of $300? $35,600. Roll call vote. Roll call vote.
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Green?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Coleman?
Aye.
Board Chair Avent?
Aye.
You have seven votes in the affirmative.
The consent agenda is approved. Seeing no other matters before this Board, the meeting is adjourned.
I'm going to say, look.
I don't know if we need to designate one person because everyone's going to have feedback.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's necessary because Mark Bergman needs one-on-one to give Board Members that feedback, but I mean, it's fine, but I, I don't think he does like that.